To present the 2024 Housing Element Annual Progress Support and Housing Catalyst Teamwork Plan. Members of the public are welcome to participate. No action will be taken by the commission. We'll get things started with roll call. My name is Anthony Torrios and I am here, Vice Chair Cantrell.
Here.
Commissioner Barocchio. Commissioner Bendol.
Here.
Commissioner Bigford.
Here.
Commissioner Lardinois.
Here.
Commissioner Lovario. Commissioner Rosario. Commissioner Young.
Here.
That's six in attendance, so we have quorum. All right, we will now call this study session to order. We will get things started with public comment. If there are any members of the public who would like to provide comment before we jump into the study session, feel free to move forward at this time. Cool, seeing none, I will turn it over to staff to present our Housing Element Annual Progress Support and Housing Catalyst Teamwork Plan. Thank you. Good evening, Chair, Council, Commissioner, sorry. So Jared Ferguson, a Principal Planner with Planning, Building and Code Enforcement. I'm here with Kristin Clements, Division Manager with our Housing Department, and Michelle Flores, Supervising Planner with Planning. So we're here to talk to you tonight about our Housing Catalyst Teamwork Plan. You know, we wanted to bring this to you. You see some of these items, I think, come through the commission, you know, as far as zoning changes, general plan changes, but we thought it would be helpful to share with you kind of this work plan on an annual basis, just to kind of give you the full context and picture of all the things that we're working on in terms of housing. Next slide. So first to get into some background on the work plan. So our Housing Catalyst Team was established in 2018 as part of our Housing Crisis Work Plan, which was the predecessor to the Housing Catalyst Work Plan. And that was really started later on in our fifth cycle Housing Element to try to coalesce our policies around advancing housing production to meet some ambitious housing goals at that time. And that really ran through the end of the last Housing Element. And in November of 2022, we proposed transitioning that Housing Crisis Work Plan to the Housing Catalyst Teamwork Plan. And our Housing Catalyst Team was created as part of that process of the Housing Crisis Work Plan. It is composed of staff from our Planning, Housing Department staff, our Office of Economic Development and the City Manager's Office, as well as Parks, Recreation and Neighborhood Services that work on housing. And so we meet twice a month to work on housing issues, to work through the work plan, to meet and discuss and collaborate together through the work items. And so with the end of the Housing Crisis Work Plan and the transition to the Housing Catalyst Teamwork Plan, we're also working on creation of our new Housing Element, our six-cycle Housing Element. So we took that opportunity to really pair those two things together more closely to align our work. So in June of 2023, as you're aware, our City Council adopted our Housing Element. And then in January, after further work, the State HCD certified our Housing Element. And last year, we provided our first update on the Housing Catalyst Work Plan in connection also with our annual progress report on the Housing Element that we provide to council and are required to submit to the state each year. So to kind of go into detail of what is in our Housing Catalyst Teamwork Plan. So as a part of the Housing Element, there were approximately 130 multi-part work items focused on production, preservation and protection of housing. The Housing Catalyst Work Plan is meant to be a subset of those work items that we're working on right now in kind of either the short term, we've already started work, or we're going to soon initiate work within the next one to two years. And it provides an additional place to kind of catalog other housing-related policy work items that weren't in the Housing Element, but that the City Council or staff have proposed to add to that that body of work, you know, around production, preservation, protection of housing. So in the work plan, we also have tried to prioritize our work around these two metrics that we've developed. And we can, in the full report that we can share with the commission, we go into some detail on these. But they're focused first on impact. So what do we estimate the effect of a particular policy will be when it's implemented? You know, how many units do we think it might result in a production? How many units might be protected through a particular policy change, et cetera? And then we also try to gauge what's the level of effort required in order to enact that policy? How much staff time? How long do we think it will take? So something that's high effort, multiple years, you know, significant staff resources, lower effort, less than a year, you know, lower on staff resources. And so try to prioritize work on high-impact, low effort. So to get into some of our work items, just to highlight some of the work that we've done in the last year that was within our Housing Element, that was also on our Housing Catalyst Work Plan. So in December, we completed our zoning work within our business corridors. So we allowed for mixed-use housing in several of our neighborhood business districts that did not allow it before. And then item P24, we completed other zoning work to allow for around permanent supportive housing in our quasi-public lands to complete that work item. Item R6, we worked on designating the 56 remaining mobile home parks under the Mobile Home Park General Plan designation to provide further protection to those residents of those mobile home parks. And then H13 was also completed around our regional homelessness response coordination and planning. H14, we did some additional work, which came through the commission around our emergency shelters to comply with state law and to show, you know, that we had capacity in our shelter, in our land to provide for shelter opportunities. And then I10 also completed around individuals with lived experience and getting them on a commission as well to provide their experience. So getting into kind of our current work, as we entered the second year of the six-cycle Housing Element, the states indicated to us what they'll be monitoring moving forward. They'll be paying specific attention to programs in our Housing Element that they highlighted in the letter of approval that they sent to us. So, you know, of the 130 programs, and in the letter we received in January certifying our Housing Element, they outlined and enumerated five or six different programs in there that they said that they would be paying closer attention to. And in kind of the guidance that we received earlier this year, they said that they, in their ongoing annual reports and monitoring, those would be programs that they would be paying particular attention to in terms of our execution and following, you know, kind of the timelines and things that we agreed to in that Housing Element. So in our report to the council and to the commission, we really put emphasis on highlighting these programs, explaining where we are and kind of achieving them. I think the good news is we have been making substantive progress on these programs and continue to focus on them in our work. So P7, one was around creating our new city streamline process to allow for infill housing through a ministerial approval. We completed kind of a major first step of that in December by bypassing that new approval process. We are going to be looking at expanding that elsewhere, but really, you know, substantial progress has been made in terms of completing that item. Item P4 is around adding additional affordable housing tools in North San Jose to incentivize kind of affordable production in North San Jose. This is in addition to the overlays that we created through the Housing Element process that, you know, were applied to new sites that would require a specific amount of affordable housing, either 100% or 25%, depending on the property. You know, kind of for this item, we haven't done additional work yet. I think in our update, what we talked about is we wanted to see how those overlays work out and then look to, you know, address it through these additional tools if needed. We want to see how the market responds and how development occurs there before we put in more work there. P9 is around prioritizing affordable housing in Deardon. And the Housing Department's forthcoming RFP will prioritize construction in Deardon Station area around this goal. P41 is around reviewing and revising our permit findings to match state law. We started initial work on this and believe that we can finish it by the end of the calendar year to meet that deadline. And then I4 is around a housing balance report, which examines changes and trends in our city's housing stock. And the Housing Department will be providing a report to the Council Economic Development Committee in April on that. So going in depth on a couple of other key programs that were mentioned in that HCD letter. The first kind of lengthy one, item P40, we started to do some analysis on is an evaluation of our urban village planning process. One of the things we heard a lot about is, you know, and one of the things that we've tried to improve upon is how we continue to do our urban village planning work to unlock new sites for housing through that work. So we've completed about, I think, 16 plans now of the little over 60 urban villages. So there's still more work to do. So trying to think through strategies to advance that work more quickly through the process. So there's kind of three strategies that we're thinking about. The first is around combined station area planning. So there are kind of two corridors remaining in the city that have unplanned urban villages. We think that there's an opportunity to kind of do those planning efforts together to, you know, there's obviously a connection between those corridors and a way to get those village plans done more quickly. And then the next, we have about, so of the 60 urban villages, 60 or so urban villages, there's 20 what are called neighborhood urban villages. These are, for the most part, pretty small in size. We think that there's an opportunity to plan these as one effort or create a policy framework that would allow for mixed use in those areas. We've got to do more work around it, but, and there may be some additional general plan changes that might be needed in order to undertake that work. But we think there's an opportunity to kind of get those done more quickly together. And then lastly, continuing to do what we're calling here traditional urban village planning work. So we have two of those underway right now. We're planning Saratoga Avenue El Paso villages together in West San Jose. That works underway now. And then we're starting on Alum Rock East Urban Village right now. And so there's still a number of those, you know, larger villages that would benefit and are appropriate for that community, several-year community-based process. Tried to put together a map of all these. It's a little bit new. So hopefully it kind of gives you a sense of kind of the areas that we're talking about. So first is what we call our combined station areas, so the two that I talked about. So at the top of the screen there in the dark green, those are the North Capital Villages. There's four or five of those together. And then to the south there along 87, we've got those two villages. And so moving on to the next, this is the large batch of neighborhood villages. So you can see spread throughout the city, varying in size. You know, there are some larger ones, but for the most part fairly smaller in size. And so, and I can see I actually missed some on there too, on West San Jose. And then last, of course, the blue are those remaining kind of traditional villages. The dark red are the ones that are already planned. Yellow are those that are underway. And then the red are kind of built. Those are a little bit complicated. But it kind of gives you a better sense, you know, I think it demystifies a little bit in terms of, you know, what's kind of remaining out there, what we have done. That kind of puts more sort of visuals to the numbers of what's out there. And then the next major program mentioned in the letter that we wanted to discuss or highlight is around item P35, what we call our Small Multi-Family work item. This is really around pursuing more missing middle housing opportunities. So missing middle is kind of medium-density housing, you know, up to 10 units in areas throughout the city that may not currently allow for that type of housing. You know, the states pursue this a bit. SB9 passed in 2021, which allows lot splits, duplexes on single-family property and ADUs as well. And I think initial response was limited. You know, these kinds of changes do take some time. You know, as we looked to last calendar year, we did see a little uptick in kind of utilization of the law. We had some lot splits, building permits to convert existing single-family homes to duplexes, you know, creating new single-family homes on lot splits or new duplexes. Kind of the next step in this policy, we're going to be looking at some missing middle prototypes within our upcoming cost of residential development, which we've done kind of regularly in the past. Typically, that's focused on kind of more dense multifamily. So we're going to continue to look at that, but we're also going to add in some of these missing middle prototypes to understand the economics before we kind of pursue more policy changes and have that help us drive what we think, you know, might be feasible and what we might see get constructed if we were to make some changes around that. And I will pass it now to Kristin with the Housing Department.
Thanks, Jared. Thanks, Chair Torrios and Commissioners. Nice to be here this evening. We work very closely in housing as I oversee all of our policy work, our inclusionary housing programs and our impact fees and state replacement housing obligations. We work very closely on policy matters. Jared, obviously, a lot on production. And then you'll see some other references in different parts of the Housing Element programs on preservation, on neighborhoods, on resident stability, on inclusive communities. So I wanted to put this image up for you. This is an image that our relatively new Housing Director has created to kind of show the many places that we intersect housing and housing policy. All the way to the left with the two arrows pointing left. We're trying to both preserve physical units and preserve tenants' abilities to stay in their unit. So avoiding homelessness and staying stable all the way to the left of the continuum. The next three blue arrows pointing right are trying to help residents who are unhoused already and with services and places to be, even if we can't get them into interim housing yet. The interim housing focus is that whole centerpiece with blue. I'm just, you know, referring both to different places that folks could be living, new interim solutions that we're creating, and then the services that help go with that, which is all incredibly important. And then over to the right, the orange arrows pointing to the right are all permanent housing solutions. You know, whether they're permanent supportive housing for the homeless, PSH. We've got over a third of our stock is rent-stabilized, regulated under the city's ordinances. We've got, yeah, restricted affordable housing as well, often subsidized by the city. And then market rate units all the way to the right. And then the programs, we have that interface with those. So the work in housing element, the many policies, which was a huge focus of the state, that we had to do a lot of policies and program developments in this cycle, much more emphasis than in the past. They touch many places throughout the continuum, so, including homeless strategies. Those are also in there too. Next slide.
Okay, before you do that, quick question. I'm just following the direction of the arrows. Assuming preventive housing is keeping, win housing or prevention philosophy.
Yeah.
And then the other ones go in the direction towards housing.
Yeah, thanks for.
Is it right then that the interim housing block in the middle that goes back and forth, mean people go back and forth?
I don't know that that's what's intended with the back and forth. But I think it's, I see it as two blue arrows stacked on top of each other, not like left and right. But the directionality, thank you Commissioner for bringing that up. The idea is to move folks along the continuum, get them stabilized in interim housing, get them into permanent solutions of various types over time. So that directionality is very intentional. So yes, two blue arrows on top of each other. Thanks.
I have a brief question on this slide also. Just what does PSH stand?
PSH, Permanent Supportive Housing for the homeless. It provides support services while folks also get an apartment.
It's expensive, thank you.
Yeah, PSH. Cool. Okay, next slide. Thanks. So there was, in 2020, in COVID, while we were all remote, the City Council passed the city's first anti-displacement strategy. And it was, I'm thinking through ways, it kind of came at a good time. We'd been working on it, but then COVID was like, oh my goodness, we have to make sure people are not displaced and are stabilized. Many different policy and kind of improvement initiatives in production and preservation and in tenant protections. And so that anti-displacement strategy has been folded wholly into the Housing Element and the Housing Catalyst Work Plan, which is the near-term work in the Housing Element. And so the state, so many people talked to the state about how important the anti-displacement strategy was to them, that the state also put the anti-displacement. They asked us to really do a crosswalk with everything that's in the plan, make sure they understood which ones were the anti-displacement.
Did, so I know that that's what, Destination Home, right? Is that the stabilization program that they?
Oh, yeah. The emergency rent payments and assistance to keep people housed in many different ways. They lead a consortium of providers, yes.
Exactly, okay. So was there additional funding when you're expanding this program?
Well, that's actually in here on one item. Okay, I'll try to flag it as we go through it. But these anti-displacement work items from the original strategy, you can see again N for neighborhoods, S for stability, R for preservation. So I'll give you short updates. These are all summarized in the attachment, in the colorful attachment as well. First bullet and four, we've been doing work on trying to help the ability for nonprofits in our community to undertake housing preservation activities and learn how to become affordable housing developers if they want to. And so we got one-time money from Google, a million dollars, under our Community Benefits Agreement that they funded right up front, which was wonderful. We did make those grants and the City Council approved it in 2024. So this is looking back to 2024, what we got done. Those two-year grants are in place now. And we are actually also, they're for four agencies. We're also actually, we were successful in obtaining a two-year policy fellow to work more on capacity building together with SV at Home, who has a whole cohort of nonprofits trying to develop their skills. And so we partnered to get this policy fellow. And she's going to be with the mayor's office and with us for two years. And she's going to be supporting those nonprofits, different nonprofits, more nonprofits, as they learn. So that was all great. For the soft story program, some of you may have been following this item. It's really about older buildings of a certain era that have a soft first story, which are in greater hazards in case of an earthquake. So the City Council in 2024 did pass the proposed soft story retrofit ordinance. We've also received some rebate funds from FEMA through the state and have applied for 25 million more of funding from FEMA. Of course, federal funding is perhaps, you know, up in the air at this, as we speak. But the ordinance was approved in September 24. It is scheduled to start the screening phase to see if properties actually are soft story or are not, which will take several years this year. And so anyway, at the same time, the Housing Department has been working to try to find additional resources to help finance those properties that have kind of suppressed rents, but really do need the work done. And so they need help trying to get that work done. So that's, we've been working on that. But in 2024, that program did get passed. And it's a major structural preservation program. For eviction prevention, this gets a little bit of what you're saying. But we have a strategy where we interface with the courts, the eviction courts. And housing staff work in the courts once a week. There were 43 weekly courthouse workshops. And the idea is in eviction court, trying to figure out what resources people need or whether there's a way to get them additional resources so they can help pay rent. 90-plus percent of evictions are due to inability to pay rent in San Jose. So it's really about resources. Anyway, we stabilized 194 households to stay stably housed through that court program. And then the eviction diversion program, which Commissioner Cantrell was mentioning, providing emergency financial assistance to try to just keep people in place. We were dispersing the earmark that we got the year before, $2 million, to help people just stay in place regardless of kind of being flexible on the terms of what they needed the money for. So, and then our department served over 5,400 households through calls and walk-ins and emails, trying to help them with referrals, trying to help guide them on, you know, their rights. Sometimes we get landlords calling too, but, you know, how do our ordinances work? And what can, can they access any resources? Okay, tenant preferences that help fight displacement. This is a way to kind of more effectively use our existing restricted affordable housing stock that is meant for the general public. So the idea is, you know, why would you just take kind of a first-come, first-served? Is there a way to kind of target? We created a way to target areas that we found were going through more changes and trying to help residents in changing neighborhoods who are more likely to be displaced to try to get a portion of units set aside for them when they, if they wanted to apply to restricted affordable.
Could you explain that? I'm a little confused.
Tenant preferences are basically creating a set aside of some, a portion of the units that are otherwise available to the general public. So not permanent supportive, not homeless units, but just general tax credit units. And then trying to say like, okay, you're going to get in a different queue and maybe your chances will be enhanced of trying to get into a unit if you choose to apply. So we did bring that program to council in 2024. Council approved it in March. We have been working with several developments, both new and existing, to try to work in the preferences, alter the legal documents. And we're working on administrative guidelines. So all that's proceeding really well. A couple more. Tenant, I'm sorry, local enforcement of state tenant protections. In 2023, a law passed, became law in 2024. It was called SB 567. It extended the 2018 law that said that rents can't spike more than 10%, basically. And that there was general eviction protections, except, you know, for just clauses throughout the state. One thing that bill did is make it clear that localities can actually help educate on the state laws and enforce, if we had resources to enforce, that we were able to communicate with people about how the state laws work and how they interact with our local laws. So we've been doing, we got into, sorry, entered into a contract with Project Sentinel, which is kind of a regional nonprofit that helps with tenant issues, educates folks about their rights. And we, the contract is to offer landlord and tenant counseling. There's a hotline people can call now. And also neutral conflict resolution services between tenants and landlords. And they can help disseminate the information about the state law, and they're quite knowledgeable. So we're working on it in that way through a contractor. And then finally, one of our commitments was try to put out, almost a pilot, but try to put out some money for acquisition and rehabilitation of existing low-cost housing to see if, you know, how preservation deals of non-restricted affordable, but just regular market rate buildings, could work. And so we successfully brought to council our first award under a Preservation NOFA of $5 million to the South Bay Community Land Trust. And they are able to preserve, and now we turned those units into restricted affordable units, 18 units at the Virginian, located kind of east of downtown. So that was our first foray. And the Housing Element asks us to continue to do that work in as much as budget allows, which is significant.
I have a question about that last one.
Sure.
Is that housing under the Preservation NOFA, is that sustainable? I mean, it was $5 million, but are the units themselves sustainable?
Yeah. When we, we and the Bay Area Housing Finance Authority, BFA, actually both funded this property. And so you restructure the finances, underwrite the expenses in a way. We tried to reduce renter cost burdens because some folks were paying well over 50% of their rent, of their income on rent. But kind of put in place really low-cost, soft repayment terms loans so that some rehab could get done and then the rents could get stabilized and restricted and that the existing residents stay in place. So it's long-term underwriting. It's like a 30-year loan commitment. So hopefully, yes. But you know, small property is hard to operate, right? Everyone knows, no matter who the owner is, everyone knows that, right?
That's why I asked.
Absolutely, yeah.
Spending $5 million does no good if a year from now the properties aren't available.
BFA gave slightly more, so the whole thing was. BFA gave slightly more, so the whole thing was a little over 10. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So lots of anti-displacement work continuing in our programmatic work. I did want to note a couple of newly added items as well from council referrals. The idea of the Housing Catalyst Work Plan is that, yes, it's the housing element work and once in a while, council's allowed to add things to our plate if they think it's really important. They did a couple of new referrals. One was, actually, this was very significant. In 2024, they extended the downtown high-rise development incentive for residential downtown high-rises, but also put in place a multifamily housing incentive program, which basically lessened some inclusionary fees and some construction and structures taxes for properties that were quite dense in growth areas and kind of larger and had already received entitlements but are kind of just waiting to pull construction permits, trying to get them over the hurdle to start construction. That's the goal for that. And so over the next couple of years, that's the intent for them to go ahead and try to pull building permits by 2026, I think is the deadline. So we've been working very hard on implementation on that, together with planning. And then this was also another referral about, you know, we had an internal audit on the tenant protection ordinance, which is just cause eviction protections. But it, and it actually, it actually, if we had a little more staff and some more tools, could be implemented more easily and with more education to the public. One of the recommendations was how do we use technology to try to help housing staff coordinate with code enforcement, so code knows which buildings, you know, are rent-stabilized and then also, you know, tries to capture more data so we know more about those properties. So, and make our operations more efficient and more data-focused to make decisions. So those were a couple newly added items. Next slide. And I am going back to Jared. I'm going over to Michelle.
Good evening. So this slide here shows our, for Rena purposes, our building permits issued are the ones that count toward a Rena goal. And so this here shows what our goal was for 2024. So with our total goal of 62,200 units, this is divided out into eight years. And so our annual goal is 7,775 units. And we have a goal for each level of income category. So as shown here, with the exception of low income, they're all significantly lower than our goal for annual goal. And so the numbers are broken down at the bottom with those two rows. Our actual performance under the 2024 units permitted and permitted and issued are used interchangeably. The state uses permitted and we use issued. And then the bottom shows what our annual goal is.
So what AMI levels are each of these?
Do you want me to? This is my specialty. Yeah, arcane knowledge, right? Very low income is, in this category, anybody from 0% of area median up to 50% of area median. Low is the people who are 51% up to 80% of area median. And those num, I should really memorize every year's salaries because actually, those people make quite a bit of money now because our countywide area medians have gone up so much. It's crazy. Yeah, our moderate income cutoff, which, you know, starts after low, so 81% of area median up to 120% of area median. When I joined the city 20 years ago, a family of four, moderate income was 104,000, made 104,000 max. They now make over 200,000 for that mod income cutoff. So we're time that people with very good jobs, multiple jobs in households. Above mod is market rate.
So above mod would be wealthy.
Yeah. Above mod is Class A, new apartments, a little Part C. And again, this is a one-year, these are one-year goals, right? And one-year achievements last year.
So is the void that significant for above moderate? I mean, there are that many households that need, wow.
It's based on that breakdown of 62,200, a subset of that is, you know, for market rate above mod performance. So that, that 3,464 is what we would need to achieve annually in order to meet that eight-year 62,200 goal.
So what's, what's blocking developers from printing money?
We really haven't seen any significant above moderate development in the last year. It's, it's, you know, this kind of goes into what our cost of development report goes into, but we're not really seeing those being financially feasible. And it's sort of shown through our permitting data. You know, in the last calendar year, we didn't really have any major apartment complex over 20 units start construction. And even kind of in the last two years, we only really had one significant project in each of those two calendar years.
So, and I just want to add, you can see very low income, low and some mod. Affordable housing, like at subsidies, still pays a lot, same for supplies and materials and labor, sometimes more for labor. But it can be counter cyclical, right? So when the market rate stuff is not moving, the only things to pull permits sometimes in troughs like this can be restricted affordable. So it's good for the city's economy, right, to have the construction flowing. And we're hoping everything gets flowing soon and doesn't get worse.
So the interest rates are that upside down? Because that doesn't, I'm just, with that type of demand, it seems that price would meet that demand, right? I mean, that's, that you could basically charge almost anything. I don't know why.
Well, you'd have to have, I mean, the rent levels are what the, what the market sets at the rent levels, right? But they're, so they'd have to be high enough in order to support the development. So what's happening is we've seen construction costs continue to rise significantly. And even, even kind of before you add in the impacts of interest rates that have occurred over the last couple of years, that's further added to infusibility. And then you have other increasing costs on development, insurance costs. And so it's really been a challenging time for, for, for market rate, you know, for kind of the dense housing that we're, we're kind of seeing. I think we're seeing some signs, you know, maybe Kristin mentioned our incentive program where we're providing some reduction in fees. There are a couple of projects moving forward under that. And so we're hopeful that we will see, you know, kind of, hopefully this calendar year, some projects start construction, you know, that could add units. But even then, it's still not to kind of where we were historically. You know, I think historically, if you look back at the last cycle, we were averaging over 2,000 units a year kind of on above moderate. You know, we had one particular year coming out of the recession where we were close to 4,000. And in the last cycle, we did deliver on above moderate, but not on low income. Right? But, you know, fortunately, the way this is trending, it's going to be hard for us to meet our goals. And so I think that's where, you know, we're trying to look at strategies and the council's looking at strategies to sort of do all that we can do to try to, to see that, that type of production occur.
And also just to point us back, at previous study session, we had a cost of development analysis.
Yeah.
You remember, like, basically for market rate development, anywhere in the city at any density, there was not able to, you know, build a project that would make a profit at the rents they could attain for, compared to the cost of actually building.
Yeah, I just didn't realize the demand was that, was this far out of whack.
Yeah, you ask a great question, right? Like, are these Rena numbers real goals? Yeah, they do indicate how many people were going to need to house based on population projections and how underhoused our existing population is. That was part of the formula this last cycle too. But as Jared said, the demand may be there, but the demand at any price point may not be there, right? So someone may not want to pay $7,000 for a two-bedroom a month. That's not going to happen, right?
Actually, that's, but that's not how it works.
At our locations, they may want to pay more in a different location, but.
That, that's how, price, yeah, okay.
Price is demand. Lots of things going into feasibility, right?
When you have this much demand and price is, something's wrong.
Okay. And this slide shows our total Rena cycle. And so this is our second year in our housing element. So ideally, we should, based on the annual goals, be at about 25%. And so here you'll see at the bottom, our total goal for the eight years, broken down by income category and how between 2023 and 2024, we've performed. So we are at a total of 5,886 units out of our 62,000 goals. We're at about 9% towards our total goal.
Could I ask you, next time you present it, to actually add the percentage here? So we all don't have to do math.
Yeah.
That's helpful. Thanks. Good talking points, though. And this is, I'm sorry, just one other question on this. So this is a, the, the total housing goal is, is actually the, how many year goal?
Eight years.
It's eight years. And we're two years into it?
Correct.
So it might be good to put that here too. And, and maybe a chart that says if we go at this rate, here's where we're going to be? Something like that?
And here, so something we're working on and we should have live for the end of this month is a dashboard. And so this will have information of what we've reported each year and it allows the public to go in and choose some different filters to get kind of what they'd like. So this would allow people to kind of pool their own information based on their interests. So it'll allow them to look based off of project affordability mix, separate out ADUs versus townhomes versus multifamily buildings, see if they're for rent or ownership, if they were any that were used estate streamlining process, and then also break it down by quarter to evaluate fiscal year versus calendar year. It'll have some additional pages on there, but allows a lot more ability for the public to pull this information themselves and really see where the development is happening. Our next steps, so we have the combined item going to City Council next Tuesday and we have also updates to our Housing Catalyst dashboards. This dashboard went live last year and will be updated with all of the updates that are mentioned in the additional programs on the dashboard. And those are updated quarterly with updates throughout the year as we're working, making progress on our Housing Catalyst Work Plan. And the Housing Department is also working on a dashboard that will have some additional information, that this one doesn't have information on interim housing, kind of fill in the gaps on where this production one that's specifically focused on planning and permit entitlements does not cover. And that concludes our presentation.
Thank you, staff. Any additional questions? Yes, Commissioner Oliverio.
Thank you for the presentation. Can you share, I think both of you have been in the position for at least four years and had the ability to understand how the federal government interacted with the city, whether as a regulatory or a funder. Can you share some of those and how those worked historically?
I used to oversee our grants program in the Housing Department. We get about 14 million a year in four formula funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to put out for programs for housing needs of various ways. And then go a lot more through the state for homelessness and other things. But I think the answer is both. The federal government is a funder, but also, you know, we don't call HUD with every little question. There are regulators, well, they want to make sure that we're doing things correctly. They audit us, they audit our use of the dollars. And so, and they issue guidance on regulations all the time and we're supposed to know it all and we're supposed to be following it all. So the answer is really both for housing.
Do you want to answer as well or no?
Do you have any federal grants?
Namely, it's.
You had that inquisitive look, I didn't know.
Yeah, no, I was just trying to think, I mean, you know, there are projects with federal funding that require NEPA analysis in addition, sometimes in addition or alone of SEQA. And that's primarily where we would have, you know, federal interaction, but for the most part, more it's in housing that has that federal either grant or, yeah.
And then on those state funds, were those passed through? Were the state funds passed through from the Fed?
No. The state HHAP, homeless housing and assistance programs, that was out of the state budget, big dollars to help solve homelessness.
And then is your department modeling to understand if you historically got 14 million? And if you only get 13 million, what's that mean? If you get 12 million, what's that mean? If you get 10, et cetera? And how do you do that modeling?
It's a good question. We're just starting to grapple with that because the news from HUD was pretty recent about potential cuts. We still don't really know, of course. The funds that we're using are for housing for persons with AIDS. It pays both for the housing itself and for support services. So if that gets cut, then we're supporting fewer people. The Emergency Solutions Grant, which pays for shelter costs. So it'll leave a hole in the budget for what we do. We don't get that much, though. We get only $3 million, 3.1, a pittance from what we should get in the home program. And we use home for single-family home rehab for lower-income residents. And we use it for tenant-based rental assistance, so voucher programs to keep people subsidized that, you know, kind of is like Section 8, but different, different rules. Those are the two major ways that we use it. Sometimes we use it for affordable housing developments. And then Community Development Block Grant is the most flexible. Commissioner Lardwatt's heard all of this as former housing and community development commissioner. And it can pay for infrastructure costs, it can pay for community facilities, it can pay for, just a bit of it, quarter of it, can pay for community services. So that's where we get funding for homeless services, delivery. But again, it's a small amount compared to what we have gotten from the state. Now, who knows what the state is going to be doing going forward? The governor seems to be focusing a lot more on results and please thank me for everything that we, that you've already gotten. But the half dollars have been really significant, so.
Yeah, I think, and when you also do your modeling, looking at if the policy changes, how does that affect? So you might be used to CDBG funding, but if the policy says you can't spend it on that, then you have to figure out, well, what's that mean? So I mean, it just seems like it's all in the headlines, but no one seems to be preparing the actual models to provide the decision-makers a way to understand what could happen versus come July 1, it's, hey, we can blame the feds, we knew six months ago, but, you know, this is what the cuts are. I just think it's a prudent thing and appreciate the answers. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. And your points are really well-taken, one which is we need to get our information to our intergovernmental relations folks and our federal lobbyists about the good that these programs do in our community. CBG is like 50-plus years old, super bipartisan, very flexible, good program. And, you know, if that's cut, then we've got, you know, older, lower-income people who can't afford to repair their own homes, who are going to continue to deteriorate the homes.
I'm not convinced anything you say could matter.
I know. I know. Yeah.
I have a follow-up to Commissioner Oliverio's question. So you mentioned 14 million in federal funding. Is that the total of all federal funding we receive for housing?
Directly, yes. I think that's right. Indirectly, as Jared said, some of the deals that, the affordable housing transactions that we may put local money into, they may also have federally-funded vouchers assigned to them. If you're going to serve the, you know, chronically homeless or the people who need support, you need to have vouchers assigned to those units to help people pay rent. So we don't get those vouchers directly. We, we contract with the housing authority for the county. Actually, we do have a small allocation. We do. I take it back. The city has a housing authority with no staff. The City Council is its board. We entered into an agreement, does Commissioner Oliverio remember all this? Years ago, we entered into an agreement for the county to administer vouchers for us. It's very staff-intensive. And so we do have resources, but we only get to, we agree on general use of resources and policy matters with them. Technically, it comes to us, but it's really theirs to administer, so. Does that help?
Yes. So in addition to that, just to do a little deeper dive, are there any federal funds that come through either the state or the county that get a pass-through to us?
We get about. We get about six or seven million a year in a permanent local, um, PLHA, permanent local housing source. It's a transfer tax. It, it was the big perm source that we got a, the state got approved a few years ago. It's a real estate transaction tax of like seventy-five cents a page or so. It's very minimal, seventy-five dollars, uh, for, um, multifamily transactions mostly. We get a bit of that. PLHA generally gets used for, because it's very flexible, homelessness, interim housing, construction interim housing subsidy, operating subsidy. So, that is passed through, you know what? I, I take it back, that's just state money. It's actually not a federal pass-through whatsoever.
That's, that's okay, that's good information, too.
I think that's about it. We're not super exposed to the feds, we're very exposed to the state.
So, so, um, thank you. My understanding is, um, the governor is looking at reducing, uh, homeless funding due to the budget situation in the state. So, have you folks received any input at all from the state about how, what, what we're looking at as far as reductions?
Well, we continue to monitor the budget proposals by the governor, work with our intermental government, IGR, intergovernmental relations team to try to, you know, say what we think is important. I, I would say one other thing, we talked about SOF story. I mean, that's federal dollar pass-through from FEMA through Cal Office of Emergency Services, Cal OES. We applied for twenty-five million dollars. Who knows if that would ever materialize? There's a lot of demand on FEMA money. We are really hopeful, but that is a housing preservation program in use that that would be, um, as well. So, you know, we do what we can to try to say these programs are doing good, good work in our locality, and that's about all you can do. Staff is also being cut at HUD.
So, um, the other thing, you know, that I just want to make the commission aware of is that the nonprofits who provide a lot of the, um, homeless prevention programs, and I'm familiar with Sacred Heart Community Services in particular, 'cause I belong to their, um, they're, they are looking at potentially a catastrophic funding loss, depending on what President's DOESH program does. So, um, you know, I, I just, I want to make an editorial comment here that I think it's very unfortunate that, um, many of the folks who voted for President Trump are the folks that are the most upset about homeless people on the streets of our city. And as a result of the cuts, we're going to have, unfortunately, more unhoused people in the city, because we're gonna lose the funding. We are gonna lose the funding, the nonprofits are gonna lose the funding that we're using to get folks into shelter. So, I just wanted to point that out, thanks. Also, just, I just want another thing on that. I'm hopeful that you folks, through the council, are gonna communicate that to our residents. Because, you know, I have many friends that, um, their number-one issue is homeless people. We want to get the homeless people off the streets. I agree. I think all of us would like to get folks into housing, but there's going to be a frustration level that's gonna occur, like, why, why, you know, why aren't we doing this? Well, part of the reason is, is that we're losing federal funding, we may be losing state funding. I just think it's really important that that gets communicated to our residents really clearly. Thanks.
I had a quick follow-up question on, uh, state homelessness funding. I had read that future rounds of, uh, state funding would be prioritized to jurisdictions that had received pro-housing designation, so I was curious if you had an update on, uh, San Jose's application there?
Um, thank you, Chair. We do not really have an update on the status of our pro-housing designation. I had not heard that for HAB, that's a sad note. We had applied for the pro-housing designation, we actually got a verbal approval. Um, but then, um, there was a discussion with the state about builder's remedy deals, and, um, they, they put us on pause, long pause. So, we're actually trying to figure out how to go back and see how to get off pause, because we're certainly processing builder's remedy deals all day long. We meet about them every week, and, um, they are certainly proceeding. So, um, I, I, we're hoping the state can get comfortable and that we can apply again and do all of the new program rules and the new outreach again to apply.
Yeah, unfortunately, they, they paused us, and then the regulations changed. So, even though we had qualified, we're gonna have to reapply under a new process, which we intend to do, but it, it takes additional time, you know, to spend on that. So, we do intend to, yeah, we do intend to pursue it again, and we think we'll be successful, but it's, yeah, we're kind of stuck for a minute, yeah.
Chair, is that HCDC they're talking about? Chair, are they talking about HCDC that approves the pro-housing, or which department and state agency?
Yeah, HCD, yeah.
Yeah, Housing and Community Development at the state.
Thank you. I was also excited to see that, uh, the small multifamily housing, uh, program would be evaluated as part of the upcoming Cost of Residential Development Survey update. Uh, I think it would be interesting, maybe not for this cycle, but for future ones, to also look at the ways that, uh, some potential upcoming building code reform could impact feasibility of different prototypes here. I know the state has started to look into, uh, you know, legalizing apartment buildings with a single staircase taller than three stories. My understanding is that those would not go into effect any year later than 2028, uh, but given that that timeline will roughly align with this program, could be interesting to look at what might be possible there.
Yeah, I think we would be interested in that. Something we could, we're still working through the current one, it's something we could bring up to our consultant. I, I think it's, it, it's hard, 'cause it's, it's not easy to model, 'cause we don't, you know, you want to predict construction costs, and we don't have that kind of construction. So, you know, but I think it's something we can, we can try to take back and, and consider. If not this year, then, then next year, for sure.
Thank you. And then one final note, uh, given our current, uh, progress against our RENA targets, is it safe to assume that, uh, when we get to the midpoint cycle overview, that we will be again subject to SB thirty-five streamlining?
Yeah, I think that's probably a correct assumption, yeah. And I think I've heard there's some legislation as well to modify 423 that would, would change the years for reevaluation. So, I mean, I think under our, our current performance, it's likely that we would be subject, and that would, that would reduce, so just to update the other commissioners on what that would mean if we're evaluated under that. Right now, under SB thirty-five, SB four twenty-three, the new number, uh, projects with fifty percent, uh, affordable or more can, are subject to the streamlining provisions there. Depending on your RENA performance, it could be a ten, a ten percent requirement. So, I mean, I think, you know, with, with our current city infill streamline, I mean, that might be also a current attractive option, but they might have that other route if they, if they chose to use it, depending on, on that determination in the future.
Sorry, Chair, could I go back to pro-housing for just one minute? I wanted to flag the fact that y'all might be interested. There's a bill that's been introduced on pro-housing to widen the activities that could help a jurisdiction qualify. It's from Senator Wahab, who's in the San Jose delegation. And, you know, the state tells us to do protections and homeless services, you know, all these things in the housing element, but yet the program had been kind of more narrowly focused on production and preservation to a large extent. And I think her bill was trying to get more credit for jurisdictions to be doing things like prevention and stabilization work for residents and, and all that kind of, um, protective work as well. So, I want to flag that for you.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff?
Is a, um, ADU considered missing middle or low income? Where do you classify that? And the reason I ask is though, it seems as though ADU costs are not inexpensive, and that becomes a market rent rate. And do you see something different?
Yeah, so, the, missing middle, there's kind of two. So, there's missing middle in terms of kind of density, and then there's kind of missing middle in terms of moderate-income housing. So, you know, the program we're talking about is, is around that medium density. Um, it is a good question and point around ADUs. So, in the first two years of our, of our program, um, you know, we do, ADUs are counted under a separate category when we report to HCD, and they're reported by income level. The way that we've reported these first two years is based on a methodology that ABAG, um, the, the, um, regional government authority, uh, approved through HCD. So, about a third of, are reported in low income, a third are reported in moderate, and a third are reported in, um, above moderate. We've been trying to do work both internally to the city and then as a region to try to understand what rent levels those units are being rented at, or if they're being rented. So, um, Michelle's worked, uh, internally. We've implemented kind of a survey tool that we put out to those, um, going through the permitting process to understand how they seek to use it. Um, and so, we're continuing to try to understand that, to understand what the rent levels are, what an appropriate classification would be when we do this annual reporting. And we're continuing to talk to A, ABAG and regionally on potentially a, a future regional approach to how we do that. But it's something we, we have some data on, but we don't have enough data on to really, um, make that determination yet.
Right, it's not like the city, um, has it, is tracking each ADU and what people are charging for rent, because it would typically be seen as a premium. You don't share any walls with anybody, um, so you have that versus an apartment.
Yeah, and they're, but they are smaller. So, I mean, you know, it's, you're renting something smaller, but it could be something new. So, yeah, I think, you know, I think there's, there's a lot of things to consider, and then how that unit might be used. Is it, is it being rented, or is it being utilized for family members or other purposes, right?
Inside the use are in turn to the home, to the other structure. You don't have to have it, it doesn't have to be outside of.
Right, you see, you can do, you can, you can do a junior ADU, so which is attached, or you can do a detached ADU. And now we do allow for condoization of that unit, too, so it can be sold separately as well.
I'll be curious, uh, maybe a year from now, to know how many people actually do that.
Yeah, it's something we're gonna be tracking now with the dashboard that Michelle shared. So, we're gonna have kind of all of that data, with more SB nine data, how that's being utilized, something we're required to report, and just kind of see how it's, you know, we're, like I said, we're kind of seeing an uptick in that, and to see if it continues, if that continues.
I just want to add, Michelle's been doing a great job collecting data, and preliminary results indicate some folks who build ADUs, we know they're using for offices. They're not renting them to third parties, or they may move in a relative and charge them three dollars. Um, you know, that doesn't mean that they're necessarily the same thing as extremely low-income housing for some third party, right? Um, with the restrictions that come with it and the obligations. I'll just note another trend, we have been seeing some developers on the inclusionary housing side, um, who are also tearing down a limited number of small units, who may have housed, they may have housed low-income people, sometimes very low-income, and state law now under SB three thirty says you have to replace the affordability level of those units as well, not just rebuild units. And, um, so that's a, something my team administers. And, um, we're seeing proposals from, um, home developers who actually want to build ADUs, potentially condoize them or rent them, but help use that, use the ADUs towards their replacement housing obligations and/or their affordability onsite obligations under inclusionary, if that's what they want to choose. So, ADUs are this really interesting topic in like lots of different dimensions, and it's just, you know, different kind of housing unit. But Michelle's gonna know on data more soon as to how they're being used and who they're being offered to as much as we can. But, um, it's not clear, it's all housing for the masses right now, so.
Actually, to go back on your presentation, Jared, that, I, I remember being very hopeful with the infill, um, changes that we made, but it seemed kind of underwhelming, not to criticize anybody's work, but it's, it's like two hundred units is what we're expecting, right?
That was just the metric that we put in the housing element as sort of an annual, um, number we might see entitled. I think there's potential for even greater than that. You know, I, I think there's already maybe some potential projects that might qualify that we're seeing coming soon. Um, and so, you know, in theory, if you had a significant development, one project could meet that two hundred. But if we had three, you know, you could get to a, you know, five, six hundred units. So, I think we were just, we were trying to pick something reasonable as, as a metric on an annual basis, but we, I mean, there's, you know, room for, for more there. So, I think there could be.
Because that telegraphed to me that we may have been too restrictive on what we were allowing.
Yeah, I mean, the potential density-capacity, we think it's over five hundred and fifty sites in that first tranche that we did, you know, it way exceeds that, that two hundred number. It's in the thousands of units, and I, you know, we're gonna continue to look at how we expand that potentially downtown and elsewhere. So, I think, you know, it's, it's sort of, there is kind of an exponential possibility, but I think, you know, for metrics that we're reporting to the state, we're trying to be a little conservative.
I think you buried the leaf. Okay, that's good. Um, and actually, just curious about the Deirdredon Station Affordable. That's, is it, the shovels are underground now, right? Or is that something else going on on those sites?
Yeah, I mean, the downtown west development within the Deirdredon Station area has, has started a little bit to proceed. There are a couple sites that were, you know, sites have been acquired, a couple have been raised. Really, this, this is about the whole Deirdredon Station area, downtown west being part of it, and how do we get affordability near the main transit center? And so, really, those strategies were kind of how do you get affordable housing anywhere? You try to target money there. You try to make sure that if we have an opportunity to buy land down there, that that is something we look at. We make sure that somehow inclusionary housing might be producing down there. So, it's kind of like, how, how do we pull the levers that we've got to try to make sure that we get some housing that is restricted affordable down near the transit? And, you know, part of that would be, it'd be great for people who have mobility problems and need to be near transit, right? Being thoughtful about that as well. So, it's really about the overall strategy. How can we just make Deirdredon a geographic focus when we do re-lease money, which the department, Housing Department, should be doing this spring with another notice of funding availability. Deirdredon and North San Jose are both geographic. You get a couple points extra if you're in those areas.
And the final, it's not a question, it's more of a recommendation. Um, as you're looking at creating or working on new urban villages or neighborhood villages, I really highly suggest that you could do a map overlay of redlined communities. Because you, when you, when you do this kind of development, you, it can easily lead to gentrification, uh, formerly redlined communities, which directly passes all the locked-up value to the next person, not to the family that managed to survive there. Uh, and I think it would have avoided the, the Cayo Willow issue. If you look at those red lines, they've never been erased. So, you, you should really consider those communities in that makeup before you plan.
Yeah, thanks for the reference to redlining maps. And I did want to say that, um, focusing on ways to keep existing residents in the neighborhood as those neighborhoods grow, right? In those areas of growth that are focused. For instance, the Five Wounds Urban Villages, um, updates that planning had been leading, we had a consultant trying to work on, on anti-displacement ideas for both small businesses and residents. And, um, what's interesting is, they were like, you should put some money in this direction. Like, yeah, we know. Like, there are not a ton of land use solutions, other than overlay zones, which Jared's team has gotten into North San Jose. That's a physical land use idea. Other than that, it's directing resources and, and trying to do that on the early side, right? So, people have options in that neighborhood. And, and I'll just say one other thing. That is why we partly went forward with the tenant preferences, which is as deals with restricted affordable do develop in these areas, there are two eligibility criteria. One is for people from that council district, so that they are local and that they want to stay local in their networks, that they could apply. But especially those areas that are higher, um, displacement risk identified through UC Berkeley, the Urban Displacement Project. That, that's the other. If you live in one of those areas, you would get a leg up anywhere you wanted to go in the city for affordable that's coming forward. So, yeah, good points.
So, if Sean Duffy, the Transportation Secretary, doesn't give any more money to BART and High-Speed Rail, how would you model that impact to what you told the state you think might happen?
Yeah, I mean, it would change potentially how we would model transportation in our housing capacity, but, you know, a lot of that capacity was even determined before BART, you know? So, I think it was always additive to help, but I think there's, you know, there is existing infrastructure there, um, where I don't know that it would necessarily hinder our, our planning, our current planning, housing efforts. I mean, I think we would want to rethink how we do things, but, you know, I think there's still.
I was thinking more or less if, if, if it sort of stops construction, then development, private development, may not occur. And so, knowing how many units are adjacent to Five Wounds or Berriessa, whatever might be the case, just throwing it out there, because this whole conversation is, uh, filled with uncertainty that needs to have some, some modeling to understand what the future is. Thanks.
Yeah, that's fair.
Yeah, and I, I want to say Deirdredon's multimodal, right? So, I'm thinking BART, but then I was like, oh, yeah, but the eighth train comes in, too. Well, that's also federal dollars. So, transportation's so federally reliant, to your point. You know, the planning effort has been to create capacity for housing in that area for whenever it can come forward. So, maybe not these four years, but maybe another four years, I don't know. But, good questions, yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff before we adjourn? Okay, any comments or questions for open forum? If not, we will.
If not, we will go ahead and, uh, adjourn at six eleven PM, and we will reconvene in council chambers at six thirty. Thank you.